Test. Okay, that's...is this on now? Yeah, this is on. Okay. So, welcome everyone to a very special meeting. First time ever, a joint meeting of the City Council and the Board of Directors of Spokane Public Schools. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to consider placing school district and city partnership facility capital improvement bonds on the November 6th, 2018 election ballot, and to take public comment on the proposed projects and ballot measures. So, what we will do tonight, after introductions and the pledge of allegiance, is we'll start with a presentation about the proposed projects. We will take community input, and then finally, there'll be a board and council discussion before votes. So, at this point, I'd like to introduce the...we'll have the roll call, please, of the school board members.
President Chapin.
Here.
Vice President Haynes.
Here.
Director Brower.
Here.
Director Newberry.
Here.
Director Weiser.
Here.
Okay, thank you. And now, I'd like to introduce our Superintendent of Spokane Public Schools, Dr. Shelley Redinger. Shelley? Where are you? Okay. We usually sit much closer together. And then Rochelle Miller, down in front, who's the Executive Assistant to the School Board and the Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam President. We are now going to open up tonight's meeting. First of August, Spokane City Council Joint Meeting with School District 81. Thank you so very much for this opportunity. I'm telling you, we're really, really excited. What I'd like to do tonight is to welcome everybody, and let you know that Council President Stuckard is currently out of town. We are going to be making our best attempt to get in contact with him, and we'll obviously report what happens a little bit later on this evening. Now, Ms. Fister, if you would be so kind, how about a council roll call, please?
Council President Pro Tem Fagan.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Council President Stuckard is absent.
All right. Thank you. And now, we'll have the presentation of the colors. I would like to introduce the John R. Rogers High School Air Force Junior ROTC Color Guard under the direction of Chief Master Sergeant Tim Tyven. Will the audience please rise? And I would ask Councilmember Mike Fagan to please lead us in the pledge.
Order and halt! Carrying out! Forward, halt! Order and halt! Right, face! Present, colors!
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, halt! Right, face! Forward, halt! Order and halt! Order! Halt! Enter! Come! Forward, halt!
Madam President?
All right. We've got a different agenda than what I'm used to tonight. So, I've introduced Dr. Shelley Redinger and our Assistant Rochelle Miller. Councilman Fagan, do you have some introductions?
Yes, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen, let me please introduce Mayor Condon, as well as our City Clerk Terry Fister. And at the end of the dais here, to my right, is the Council Policy Advisor Brian McClatchy. I'd also like to introduce Andrew Chance, the Director of the Spokane Library. And as well, would...are there any library board members here with us tonight? Ah, yes. That would...and if you would be so kind, please stand. Casey Bowie, Jim Kirchner, and Mary Starkey. Thank you so very much for joining us tonight. Madam President?
Okay. Our meeting tonight will start with a presentation by the mayor, the Superintendent of Public Schools, the School District and City Administration on the proposed bond products...projects. And I believe there are agendas and printed materials available to the members of the audience, as well as will be posted on the screen.
Okay. Well, it's a real honor to be here this evening at this historic event. And I'm really proud to introduce our district team that's been working on this partnership for many, many hours and many, many months. So, first of all, Cindy Coleman, our Director of Business Services. Cindy, please stand. So, let's see. There we go. And we've got Mark Anderson, Associate Superintendent, Lyndon McDermott, our CFO, Jim McNeil from Foster Pepper, who serves as District Bond Counsel, and Greg Forsyth, Director of Capital Projects.
So, and thank you for being here, and it's great to be in front of the council and the school district. Spokane Public Schools is the reason why our citizens live in the city we do. And so, from the city, of course, Rick Romero, who works in the mayor's office. You heard Andrew Chance, who is the Director of Libraries and the trustees, that of course are here as a separate organization, but of course is a major part of the city operation. Mike Ormsby, our city attorney, assisted by Laura McAlune, who is with us on the bond side of the house. Our CFO, Gavin Cooley. And then, of course, our Parks Director Leroy Eady. And so, as we have those teams, and then we also have our partners from the Public Facilities District here. And Stephanie is with us and some of our folks from the Public Facilities District.
All right. So, we're going to kick off a quick PowerPoint. Hopefully, not deft by PowerPoint. We're going to go through this quickly. We won't read each piece of it. But this really came about as we started talking about land, and we decided that we could do some really cool things together if we put our heads together. So, what's happening in the school district is we need additional schools to reduce class size at the elementary level. As you know, in Spokane Public Schools, we're K6. We want to move to a K5 model and then have 6'8". In order to do that, we need to build some new schools, some new middle schools. So, we want to modernize and replace some old schools, enhance school safety and security, add some additional space for option programs. And then also, the one that seems to be causing the most consternation, that we really want to have it not overshadow everything, is the stadium. And I know that David's going to talk now about some of the city parts of this.
And so, as you look at this, obviously, as we look at the city's facilities and our city park users, some of the recreational facilities, as we talk about this, and you'll see it in the presentation, what's amazing is the partnerships that we've had. And thank you to the board and to the staff of the school district. The reality is, we have longstanding agreements, both with the fields and with the gyms. And to think about what we are...I was just recently out at Shaw Middle School. Every summer, I go out there and read. There's a reading program out there. And I have been to Shaw over the last six years, as it's gone through, quote unquote, "it's remodeled." Okay, if that's what we call a remodel, I want those contractors at my house. The remodel and the refurbishment of that school is outstanding. And to see what that is, it didn't...Salk, excuse me, excuse me. I'm sorry. No, Shaw's next. Excuse me. So, I think about Shaw, but no, Salk, out in northwest Spokane. And so, I've been going out there for six years. And to see the asset that is in our neighborhood, not only in the facilities and the gymnasiums, but also in the fields, and that these will now be throughout our city, you will see this, is just a major opportunity for us. Of course, the libraries and the library board that is here and the director, we are 22, 25 years into, quote unquote, "our new libraries." I even say, "those are our new libraries." I can't believe that in 2008, the bond paid off for all those libraries. But we need to change and transform our city libraries. And you're going to hear about those partnerships, not only in programs, but now in the facilities that we have for those programs, and the first ever in city history of where those partnerships are coming together. The final piece, and I have to give it to our city council, we endeavored on a joint strategic plan a couple of years ago, and one of the primary issues is the largest property owner within the city limits is the city government. And so, we said, "you know what? Are all of our properties at the highest and best use for our citizens?" And now, we're starting to look at, you know what? The highest and best use for some of our 13 and 15-acre parcels is for our schools. Besides our river, I would suggest the schools is our number-one asset. So, it's exciting to see that, and you will all see those partnerships tonight.
All right. So, we're kind of at a good time to look at this because of the McCleary decision, which I know everyone is tired of hearing about the McCleary decision, but it did do some good things for taxpayers in our part of the state. Not so much on the west side, but the east side, we are going to see a reduction in our tax rates. Even with the increase of the state property tax overall, Spokane taxpayers are going to see, from Spokane Public Schools, a reduction. So, we did think it was a good time to look at leveraging some dollars, working in partnerships in this moment of time, rather than waiting till 2021, when our next bond was supposed to take place. So, actually accelerating that and going a little bit sooner. So, this would be able to accelerate reduction in class size and replacement and modernization of our buildings.
As we also look at this, it really gave us the opportunity to look at a...not only the property, and yes, that's how maybe it came, because we need to put these facilities together, but how do we look at it across the organizations and build that city? And you know, I was looking at this, and you all know this, but maybe the public doesn't. And I just happened to...I looked at two mission statements, that of the city, "to deliver efficient and effective services that facilitate economic opportunity and enhance the quality of life." The number-one reason why people live in the city of Spokane is Spokane Public Schools. That is the number-one reason why people choose to live where they do. So, when I talk about the "enhance the quality of life," that's number-one. So, this makes total sense to me, but we also have to look at efficiencies. Why make...or why have the school district go out and buy other property? The school district's mission, our mission is to develop the skills and talents of all students through the rigorous learning experiences, supportive relationships, and relevant real-life applications. That happens in our neighborhoods. The efficient use of government-owned assets, and then to deliver what the school district has been committed to for decades. And I will continue. This is what it's about. It's about outcomes. It is about bringing these pieces together. And I'll tell you what it really is about. It's about programs. I have to give it to the school district, their board of directors, the senior leadership and the administration. This is how you build a school district of choice. It is about having programs that people choose for their kids. I have to give it to you. What you've done, and the forward thinking and the innovation of what you've done, has brought a school district to the top tier. It is not unusual for me to hear about people saying, "you know, mayor, I'm looking for somewhere to live, because I want to live in Spokane Public Schools, and I want my kid to go to the Laboratory Sciences Program at North Central. I want my kid to be part of the Total Immersion Program at Libby." My wife graduated...well, graduated from junior high at Libby, when it was just a regular old junior high. To sit there and see one of our most vulnerable neighborhoods be built on, and people want to go there because of that. My son goes to Odyssey there, or Tesco. And how that is a part of it, and your partnerships there. This city council and the leadership, Council President Ben Stuckard and former Councilwoman Amber Waldorf, and all of them, about targeting investments along Sprague. When I see that coming together to revive a neighborhood for decades, that's why we're here tonight. Who would have ever guessed we would have sat here? And I'll tell you, this idea of a joint meeting came from the council president. Let's come together and talk about how we can do this together and build a city. It's also based on programs we've done together. I was just out at the YPI and PAL program at Shaw. And we started that program at Liberty. And we had like 35 kids, just with our...not just, but with our police department. Now, we're over 200 because of the STEM summer programs, the opening up of the gymnasium there. I saw one of our police officers teaching kids about a circuit. A police officer teaching somebody about an electrical circuit. This is where we should be. You know, as we're tight...and then they go out onto the field, and you see the kids coming over from the community center. And so, we started there. We did the zone together. I'll tell you, right when I started as mayor, someone asked, "do you run the school district?" I said, "no." Thank God for the citizens of Spokane. But they said, "you know what? A fellow mayor of mine said, 'you know, you've got to make sure you have the best school district, because it don't matter how good your streets are,' believe it or not, citizens. But it matters what your...and it doesn't matter how good your parks are. It matters what your school district is." And so, literally, there's been a cubicle in my office that's been empty for six years, because we have partnered with the school district. And we started first with the achievement gap. And James Wilburn looked at the achievement gap. We then looked at the zone, and we contributed our dollars to employees, and amazing employees from the school district to address these issues. Now, we're running the zone, and Amber Waldorf is running that, to say, "what are we doing in northeast Spokane?" But it's literally about how do we become a healthier community? Yes, a smarter community, quite literally, through who you produce and your kids that you educate and the teachers that are committed to this. It's about a safer community, of putting these critical assets in some of our vulnerable neighborhoods. And what that brings is a true asset. And yes, about economic growth for all of our citizens. As you see this tonight, you'll see it is across the city. There's never been a proposal that doesn't more universally look across the city than this that's in front of us today. And it's about bringing all those...yes, tonight, we're going to talk about facilities. That's what capital dollar is about. But what it's really about is the programs that happen inside those buildings and the people that come together because of those. And so, congratulations to both of the boards, the boards and the council, on seeing this through, because any partnership has its ups and it has its downs. And as we're committed to the outcome, that's what it's all about. It's about producing that city of choice through an educational system of choice. And you have a long history of this. This is not something that's new.
All right, Rochelle.
So, are we ready for our team? Or do we...
Yeah.
All right. So, Mark Anderson, McCupkin, and Rick, and they'll kind of go from here.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and Superintendent Redinger. Is that on? Can you hear me? Yeah, got it. So, the partnership actually, discussions started several years ago when we were talking about trying to buy some land from the city of Spokane up off North Foothills Drive, across from G Prep, to build a school. And so, we were going back and forth, trying to figure out, you know, what the right price and if we could do it. And so, as we started thinking about, is that really the right way to, you know, have... You know, taxpayers already paid for that property once. Should they have to pay for it a second time? And so, Rick has been kind of the mastermind, Romero, of thinking about these creative ideas. But this is one of the properties in northeast Spokane that would be a perfect spot for a new middle school. We actually need three new middle schools, as Dr. Redinger said. One in the northeast part of town, one in the northwest part of town, and one on the south, in order to move our sixth graders, have enough space to move our sixth graders up into the 6, 7, 8 middle school configuration. And that will allow us then to easy overcrowding at our elementary schools and get class size down. So, that's...this is an important piece of trying to do a good job for our staff and students educationally. The second one that...and I'll let Rick talk about this, for a south sites middle school.
So, this is a site up by the current Mullen Elementary School. And it has been, in the past, a landfill that has been closed for about 30 years. And there's some property adjacent to that landfill that has never been part of the landfill that we discovered would make a great opportunity to address the middle school need that you have on the south side. So, we're working together here to bring this as an opportunity with the partnership as well.
And then, for the northwest side of town, we actually have property that we purchased in a land exchange with the city in 2013, but it's the parking lot of Joel B. Stadium, which is a 30,000-seat stadium, and you need that much parking. It's required for that type of stadium. So, one option that we've talked about for the northwest is basically rebuilding a smaller Albie Stadium, downsizing it from 30,000 seats to 5,000 seats. That gives us then the spot to build on the parking lot, which currently exists for a northwest middle school. And Albie has reached the end of its useful life. It's...we took over running it in 2013 with getting a credit toward its purchase. The city actually still owns the stadium, but it's our option to get it by 2021 for getting the credit for running it these last few years. And so, we would downsize the stadium, as you can see in this graphic, have some spot for parking, but a big space for that northwest middle school, about 16 acres for the northwest.
So, before we jump into the library projects, which are really kind of the heart of the city's side of the initiative that's going to be voted on tonight, I just want to say, this is the opportunity to work together with my team and with Mark's team has been a career highlight for me. And I think the creative thinking that we've been able to pull together across our schools and our libraries here has been pretty impressive. But it really started to take off when Andrew Chance, our library director, came into the discussions, and we started thinking differently about how we offer programs, where we cite them, how we share facilities and land with the school district and the city to achieve some pretty incredible outcomes on our library side. I'm going to let Andrew talk about this. There are three, what I would call the key partnership projects in the library side, where we're literally sharing facilities and land. One at Shadle, one out on Sprague at the Libby Center, and then at the Shaw Middle School with Hilliard. But I'm going to ask Andrew Chance to come up and go through really the presentation of the heart of what the council would be voting on tonight.
Thank you, Rick and Mark. Andrew Chance, Executive Director, Spokane Public Library. Thank you, School Board, and thank you, City Council. Little introduction on our situation at the libraries. If you could flip to the slide. Do I have the clicker? Oh, you got it. There you go. There we go. So, our facilities were originally passed to the bond from the 1990s. Built the six facilities that you're familiar with now. Those facilities are going to be turning 30 soon, in massive need of some renewal. We really haven't had a significant investment in those facilities. Many deferred costs, original carpet, original HVACs, original roofs. So, those are at the end of life, and we really need to make an investment in those. Couple that with many changes in life, in the world. When these facilities were built, technology wasn't a thing as it is today. So, we need to adapt and change our service model in order to remain as relevant as we are in the community. Couple that with population growth in the city. I mentioned technology. Also, the way that citizens are starting to utilize our libraries are really changing. We've seen a 100% increase in our programs and events attendance since 2014. It's pretty significant. And when you think about it, with technology becoming so high in people's daily lives, people are looking to meet. They're looking to connect, not over a screen, but with each other. And that's a critical role that we play for this community. Put all that together, and what that means for us is we have limited space to offer the services that we need to offer for the community. And you can see, over the past few years, we have done a lot of adaption in our service model, bringing things like Lilac City Live to the community, which is a late-night talk show that really showcases Spokane artists and writers at the downtown facility. We've ventured into really creative partnerships, like Community Court, that's offered downtown, as well as opening a coworking space downtown, offering music lessons for those that can't afford them, as well as our latest venture of a 24/7 library kiosk at West Central Community Center. Spokane Public Library is always looking at ways to be creative with our service offerings for the community. This started with us back in 2016, when we started taking a real deep dive into what those facility needs would be. We came out with our future study at that time. Our board approved our future study. And what that was, was basically a whole system-wide assessment of our facilities and what we need to do in order to remain relevant in the community. This last round in 2018, we wanted to confirm what we had heard in 2016. So, we went through a really intensive community outreach during April and May and June of this year. We engaged with over 1,300 citizens. We had over 45 engagement events and opportunities. These ranged from open houses, town hall meetings, roundtables, kiosks in the libraries. We embarked on intercept events in high-traffic areas, places like Ace Hardware, places like the Rocket Bakery, because we wanted to go to where people were at to get the widest range of input that we possibly can on this. We also had an online survey. We got plenty of staff input. And we also had a community advisory committee to help guide us through the process, as well as our board of trustees. So, what are we trying to accomplish with this? We want to get the most bang for our buck. So, wherever we can, we're trying to reuse the facilities that we currently have and renew those. But we're also looking at building capacity. So, we need to add space, recapture space in our underutilized spaces within the libraries, and really address some service deficits that we see in some of our underserved communities. We're looking for equitable improvements across the city and really venturing in this amazing partnership with Spokane Public Schools to realize some efficiencies and some benefits for the community. So, the projects that we're looking at are a makeover at our Indian Trail branch, an expansion at our Shadle branch. Shadle's one of our busiest branches. It's currently at 17,000 square feet. We're looking to bump that up to about 30,000 square feet. We're looking at recapturing the first floor of the downtown library, as well as reimagining the other two floors. We're looking at remodeling this current South Hill site, so keeping that site where it's at, but doing a remodel. And for east side, we're looking at moving east side to Liberty Park. The east side branch is our smallest branch at 6,000 square feet. And what we find is, a lot of our population travels an extra few miles to the South Hill library because we can't offer the relevant services that we need to. So, creating a more convenient services for our customers. At Hilliard, we're looking at a joint-use facility at the Shaw Middle School, expanding the capacity of that branch. And we're also looking at a partnership at our...the school's Libby Center. So, just north of that facility, they're...they have interest in creating a professional development center for their staff. And we want to put a library right there. There's a lot of synergy that can happen on that site, and really recognizing that, you know what? The I-90 is a real divide in this community. So, why not address that and give the services to both sides of the I-90? So, here's what we're looking at for Hilliard. Moving it right across the street. These are just concepts at this point. The school will be going through a master planning process for Shaw, and we'll be entering with them on that in the library planning portion. So, there's a couple options. These are just, again, concepts. You can put it right across the street from the library, or maybe utilizing the corner. The Hilliard Library is our second smallest library at 8,000 square feet. And that library serves the entirety of District 1, which is the largest population of any district in the city. So, they're at a real disadvantage with the space and place that that community can utilize for library services. So, we're looking to increase that footprint to about, you know, 12,000 square feet, creating better spaces for children, as well as adults around learning and collaboration. But we also have a Plan B. So, you know, what we're looking at is two different ballot measures here. So, if the school's ballot measure were not to pass, our Plan B is to do a significant remodel at the Hilliard Library. And you can see from this slide here, there's some opportunity with the entrance area there, underutilized. So, this gives you a little bit of a concept of what we're looking at. Creating a bigger meeting room, better access to the children's area. Those dark red blobs are group study rooms. None of the libraries that we have in our facilities, of our facilities, have group study rooms. So, what we find a lot... So, what we find a lot is a conflict in our audiences. We serve kids, we serve teenagers, we serve adults. Instead of pretending that kids are going to be quiet, the other option that we have is to create quiet spaces for adults. So, we're hoping that should, you know, this awesome partnership with the school not come to be, that this is our Plan A, really creating a better experience for the Hilliard area. This gives you an idea of what a modern library might feel like. You've got little nooks and crannies for the kids. You've got seating areas that are suitable for all types of body types, not just the types that like to sit in hardwood and chairs, which there aren't many. So, creating those really comfortable, engaging areas for people. Indian Trail is our newest library. It's about ten thousand square feet, but still, it's based on that old model of library services. So, what can we do at Indian Trail? A quick facelift to really transform the facility. Again, it's creating some group study rooms, utilizing some of the outdoor space to create options for people, and enhancing the children's area with more of a discovery theme, tactile things for kids to play with, as well as engage with the books, as well as creating collaboration areas for our adults and teens. And this gives you a sense of what this might look like. We're looking at creating shelves with wheels, more comfortable seating area, more flexible spaces for the community. South Hill, when we went out in our community engagement, we thought we had a great idea of relocating it to Thornton Murphy Park. And I learned that, you know, you're not really doing community engagement unless you learn something. And we learned that Thornton Murphy wasn't a popular choice for the South Hill community. So, we're staying at South Hill, and we still think that we can create a really great experience for the community. What we're looking at, you know, South Hill is our busiest branch. It has the highest circulation, highest meeting room usage. There is a huge conflict of interest because of the kids and the adults trying to utilize the library at the same time. So, really trying to create those group study rooms in the facilities to try to quiet that conflict down. The other thing that we want to do is create a drop-up, a drop-off area. The parking issues at South Hill leads to some problems, so we're looking to utilize the parking lot in a different way, in a more convenient way for our customers, so they can just drop off materials or pick them up. Again, a sense of what it might look like and feel like. Shadle, this is one of our more dramatic transformations. Shadle's currently at about seventeen thousand square feet, high usage, really well-loved library by the community. You can see in the picture here, that's, in the red dash lines, that's the current footprint. So, we're really looking to do a pretty good expansion there, creating the MAPS rooms. MAPS is an acronym for Maker, Art, Partner, Study. So, these are flexible rooms for the community to use as they please, outfitted with technology and different tables and things that people can use to collaborate. A really big expanded programming room. Oftentimes, we're at max capacity with that room, so really expanding that and giving a new opportunity for the community. Liberty Park, this is a huge opportunity for us in serving not only the East Central community, but the Perry District as well. We have been in conversations with the Parks Board about locating a library site at the park. We're looking at expanding this facility up to about twelve to fifteen thousand square feet. What we like about this is that it has a lot of the same characteristics as Shadle, where you have a shared park, library, you have an aquatic center there. So, we pictured this being a really well-utilized library by families, just like the Shadle facility, and it's keeping it on the south side of the I-90. It's about half a mile from the current facility, so it's not a big hardship on the current users of East Central. This is the Liberty, or, sorry, the Libby School Partnership. It's that joint-use facility with Spokane Public Schools Professional Development Center. We're looking at a smaller neighborhood library here to serve not only the citizens on the north side, but really create some synergy with the East Side Business District Group. You know, high technology, lots of meeting room space, and business resources for the And downtown, if you look at this image here, think of this as three floors of the library, the first being the meet and staff, books, 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 and our lens area, which is the glass area overlooking Spokane Falls. And this is what we're looking at creating. It's not just about books anymore. It's about people, and creating those spaces for people. Still having a meeting area, still having books, but also having those learning and collaborative, performing, and discovery and creation spaces. What we're looking to do at downtown is pretty dramatic. This is the current floor plan. If you've ever been in the downtown library, the only space open to the public is those two meeting rooms. The rest is underutilized staff space. And we know that we can condense that space to create something pretty powerful for the community. And here's what we're looking at doing, creating really a different walkthrough that's a collaborative space. It's this first box up here, where there's a cafe, a new art gallery, still having those meeting rooms, the yellow boxes up towards the top being a maker's space, music lab, and collaboration area. Having an entrance that goes out to Spokane Falls Boulevard. There is the public plaza that's being built on top of the CSO tank. So, really creating a pretty amazing connection for the citizens to see the falls and enjoy the falls in a different way. Just like you've seen in the other branches, those red blobs that we're looking at, those are small meeting room spaces for the community. We have a bit of a, here's a concept around the outdoor area. South side of the, or, sorry, north side of the library. Really great connections that we can have there. And here is, oh, is there any way that you can play this? There we go. So, here's to give you a sense of the look and feel of what the library might feel like. And again, these are concepts at this point. So, we're walking through the new library. Remember, just meeting rooms currently. Creating a much more open sense. That's a digital media wall, so we can use that as a platform for artists, information, some discovery elements. You've got the cafe over on the side. You've got the collaboration and meeting room space off to your left. You've got your media lab and your music recording studio. Again, we're looking at making connections with, in a different way for the library, with different information and creative needs. There's that new entrance that we're looking off up for Spokane Falls Boulevard, a new staircase. We'd still keep the other staircase, but creating a better connection up to the second Having movable shelves, so we can utilize the space for different, you know, utilize the space differently during different times of the day. Children's discovery area overlooking the Spokane Falls. Going up to the third floor, the video stops. They take some break. Going up to the third floor, what you see is the stage area. So, we currently have a stage that overlooks Spokane Falls Boulevard. That's where we hold our Lilac City Live, as well as a bunch of community events currently. So, just enhancing that space. We've really been working, making sure that we can get the, not overpromise with what we're doing for the community. We've really been working on our cost model for the past few months. We worked with Group Four Architecture, as well as Integris, a local firm, and Rowan Associates. So, what you're seeing when we're looking at the totals is comprehensive. We've done our work with this. So, it's the construction costs, furniture, technology. We're looking at enhancing our collection, as well as public art and escalation fees. So, basically, what we're looking at is about twenty-eight, little over twenty-eight million dollars for downtown, little over fourteen for Shadle, about three million dollar investment in South Hill, East Side to Liberty Park, in between seven and eight million, Hilliard about five million, and just shy of two million for Indian Trail and the branch at the Libby Center. We're also looking at rolling out some more twenty-four-seven kiosks into the community for underserved areas. So, we're budgeting in for about three of those kiosks. And we're looking to allocating about two million dollars to our collections, both digital and print elements. We're still, we're not a library without our collection. We're not a library without serving our people, and that's what we're looking to do with this. All in all, we're looking at about seventy-seven million dollars on the library side. If you want more information, we do have a website set up at future.spokanlibrary.org, the entirety of the tour of the downtown libraries there, as well as our executive summary and visuals for all the branches. Thank you. Rick and Mark are going to come back up.
Well, thank you, Andrew. That's very exciting prospects for our libraries across the city, and you did a nice job of summing what would be on the bond.
So, as soon as we bring this up here, so like Andrew said, we're talking about a resolution tonight that the council will take a vote on, on the city's side, that would include all of the projects that Andrew just discussed, three new libraries, four modernized libraries, a seventy-seven million dollar request, which equates to about nineteen cents per thousand of assessed value for our citizens.
And then on the school district side, as we shared, there would be three new middle schools on city land. We would replace our three oldest middle schools, Glover, Sacagawea, and Shaw. The master plan there would be also to include that Hilliard Library project with our project. The stadium, either where it is or downtown, but we have money in our bond to downsize that stadium to a five-thousand-seat stadium. At Lewis and Clark High School, we are currently in the process of designing an eight-classroom addition to the school. It's our largest high school in Spokane, and they have not had a cafeteria or a commons all these years. And so, as the need for safety, as well as keeping kids on campus, they are in need. So, we are actually designing the commons, the cafeteria, but this bond would fund it. On Track Academy is an option program that we have out near on the Shaw area, next to the Skill Center. And our On Track Academy is growing with the number of students they're serving and expanding the grade range that they are working on. And so, On Track would be a part of that, get a new facility as part of that Shaw master plan. And then, with the library on Sprague, next to Libby, we could remodel the training rooms that are currently there back into classrooms, so that our Spanish immersion program, which will have kindergarten and first grade next year, it can keep growing into a school. And then, kind of the hallmarks of our bonds have been, we fund our technology for students out of the bond, safety and security upgrades. We've actually spent all of our money for security upgrades from our two thousand fifteen bond. This would give us another kick to do some more work. We're having a study done next year of our safety and security systems, and so that would give us funding for that. Then finally, the final piece, I think, that has been a very popular piece of our bond program, is what we call our smaller building improvement projects. I call it the chicken in every pot. Every school gets something, every school, neighborhood, every parent group, it's something out of the bond. It could be a new playground equipment, keeping our schools up. It could be a new air system for the school, et cetera. So, those projects total four hundred and ninety-five point three million. And by replacing Glover, Shaw, and SAC, the state will kick in about fifty-eight million to help with those projects. That's called state match funding. So, the total would be five hundred and fifty-three point two million, and that's about seventy-nine cents per thousand. Of this tax drop that we see, it's about two dollars and twenty cents. So, the concept is to invest part of this tax drop of two dollars and twenty cents in our schools, our libraries and recreation, and then have the citizens enjoy a tax break with the remaining portion. So, there's kind of a picture of the school projects, the city library projects, the two And that's what the tax rate, the two dollar and twenty cent tax rate drop due to the McCleary decision, the state taking over funding and limiting our local levies for educational enrichment. So, this would be an investment of about ninety-eight cents per thousand, and a dollar twenty-two remaining as a tax rate reduction. So, just one more thing, if we wait till two thousand twenty-one, on our original plan, the projects I just showed you will escalate and cost construction about a hundred million dollars, it'll cost taxpayers about a hundred million dollars more. And by two thousand twenty-one, it would not be a tax drop, it would be a tax increase, and delays our ability to do K-three class size reduction, three years, moving our sixth graders, three years. And by that time, we may have to buy property. Who knows if we'll have this partnership as good as it is right now. So, that's, I think, another real advantage of doing it now. And Dr. Redinger said, you know, now seems like a right time, because we could take advantage of the tax rate drop, leave some of that in taxpayers' pocket, but also invest in our schools and libraries and recreation. And Rick and I have been out presenting this to a lot of groups, and kind of some of the themes that we've heard are...
So, I think one of the things that we continually hear is just, citizens are really pleased that the organizations are working together to try to save citizens' money, try to make better use of property that we already own, and think holistically about how we integrate across our organizations. So, I would say that by far has been the number-one response that we've received.
And you can see, a lot of these are school groups. I think the second theme we heard is, thank goodness, help get class size down, help relieve overcrowding at our elementary schools, let's do that.
And I think really, just the idea that we can perhaps pull this together and make major investment in all of our neighborhoods and our communities, and still do it at a time when the citizens are going to see a reduction in their tax rate. So, the two initiatives tonight, a resolution on the city's side for the library request that Andrew covered, the school side of this that Mark and his team have covered, all of which have integrated elements across the organizations. Our teams, as we were working at this, looked at the option of bringing the stadium downtown as part of this proposal. It's not an action item tonight, but we do continue to have discussions. The council has scheduled a study session for tomorrow. We're going to continue to talk about this. What that does, if we look at bringing it downtown, it introduces a new partner in the equation. We've got the schools, the council, and the library board already. Stephanie Curran is here from the Public Facility District. Obviously, it is their property. It has to integrate and fit with the things that they're doing downtown. So, again, it's not here for action tonight, but we are continuing to have that discussion. And, go ahead, Mark, if you want to advance here. So, just so everybody knows what we're talking about with that issue, the downtown option would sit off of Boone and just north of where the new sportsplex is going to get constructed, and just to the east of the arena. And, if you want to kick it forward one more. And I guess, you know, the part of that that is also appealing to us, at least to continue to talk about and see if it's a possibility, is that if the... is that if the stadium's relocated, the schools can build at the middle school site, which would then free up the site where Albie currently sits for potential future fields. Again, not on the action list tonight, but we do want to continue the discussion on that this next week.
And then just finally, before we turn it back over for public to comment, this is just a graphic of just showing you what this partnership could do for our city. It really touches every neighborhood across our city, both with libraries, school renovations, new schools, safety, technology, and so forth. So it is a pretty impressive way to invest totally all around our community and our city. So with that, I think that finishes the presentation. We'll turn it back over to Councilman Fagan and President Sheeple.
Yes, thank you very much, everyone, for your presentations. This is wonderful. It's exciting to see how we can all work together for the benefit of the community. We'll now move on to the public testimony portion of the meeting. Council President Pro Tem Mike Fagan will read off the names of all those who have signed up to speak. If you're here to speak and you have not yet signed up, please do so. When you come up to the microphone, please state your name and your address for the public record. And we ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. Time goes fast when you're talking, so be, please be attentive to the three-minute limit. The timer will be up on the screen. And out of courtesy for all who have something to say, we do ask that if your time runs up and you're still speaking, please finish your sentence and then relinquish the mic for the next person.
Thank you, Madam President. Would like to go ahead and also remind folks that this is a special meeting. Therefore, some of those council rules and the way the meetings are formatted, we're not going to be following that traditional thing tonight. So there isn't going to be an open forum format. We would definitely like to be respectful in our comments. We need to limit our comments, please, to the agenda topics tonight that are before us. That would be Spokane Public Schools Resolution Number 2018-10, as well as the City of Spokane Resolution Number 2018-0069, which encompasses the school bond presentation as well as the library bond presentation that we just saw. I will be reading off several names at a time, and if folks would be so kind, once you hear your name, line up on the outside of the aisle there or behind the current speaker, whatever's more convenient for you. That way, we can get through the list of speakers that we have tonight, and we do have a lot of speakers. We'd like to do that so that we can be as efficient as possible. So with that said, the first several speakers up would be Mr. Ed Newman, Mary Beth Smith, Joanne McKay. Please come on up to the podium there.
Council President Pro Tem Fagan?
Yes.
Do you want me to read the agenda item first? And take action to approve the revised version?
Uh, yes. Why don't we go, yes, why don't we go ahead and do that? I was going to do that a little bit later on, but please, by all means.
Okay. Resolution 2018-69, a resolution of the City of Spokane, Washington, providing for the form of the ballot proposition and specifying certain other details concerning submission of the qualified electors of the city at a special election to be held therein on November 6, 2018, of a proposition for the issuance of its general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed seventy-seven million dollars or so much thereof as may be issued under the laws governing the indebtedness of the city for the purpose of providing funds to finance capital improvements to the Spokane Public Library facilities and collections.
Thank you, Ms. Fister. With that said, I'm sorry, sir, but got a little procedural thing that I've got to take care of here. With that said, would entertain a motion and a second to accept the revised version of Resolution Number 2018-0069?
So.
Okay. I got a motion and a second. Now, we're going to go ahead and call for a voice vote on that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay? All right, we are unanimous on the ayes. That being said, sir, Mr. Ed Newman, please keep an eye on that clock.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Ed Newman. I live at 3920 East Congress up in the South Hill. I'm here to speak about some four-legged friends that I'm afraid are being forgotten about in the South Hill land swap if it goes through. There is an unofficial dog park up there, and I don't think anybody is thinking about what they're going to do with the land or if they swap that land out, is there going to be land available for another dog park? Now Mayor Condon said Spokane is known for the quality of life and for healthier neighborhoods. We have senior citizens and kids that are using that park daily to walk their dogs. It's good for them, it's good for the animals, and the nice thing is, a lot of these people live in apartments or in condos where there is no place they can let their dogs just run. But that said, I hope this is considered when they do these land swaps. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Mary Beth Smith.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I represent Lewis &amp; Clark High School, where I am principal and home of the mighty Tigers. Lewis &amp; Clark High School, I believe, offers a great humanizing influence on the downtown core. I think it makes it warm and vibrant and energetic, and I think it is magnificent that our students and our community interface so closely. But maintaining the feel of a campus is a challenge at Lewis &amp; Clark. Several years back, late in the 1960s, the I-90 corridor was established directly, and I mean directly, across the street from Lewis &amp; Clark. No other high school in the state sits as closely to an interstate than does Lewis &amp; Clark. And as a result, we get noise, dust, grit, emergency vehicles, sirens, and not too infrequently, an occasional hubcap. Our campus is bisected by one of the city's major arterials, Stevens, hence our skybridge to move students across four lanes of southbound traffic. Our student pocket parking lot is across a second major arterial from campus, Washington, which means that students are only able to get from campus to the student parking lots by crossing two major arterials. The street immediately bordering us on the south is Fifth Avenue, a major access for ambulances and other vehicles accessing Deaconess Hospital. And think of this, no other high school in the area, in fact, no other high school in the state, has traffic moving through and around its campus at this proximity. And again, no other city, no other high school in the state has an interstate running right out front. Additionally, Lewis &amp; Clark's athletic fields are not exactly a quick sprint away. They are, in fact, two miles south at Hart Field, smack in the middle of the Manitowhe neighborhood. We love it there, but we are not able to host many of the community building events there due to limitations on lighting, parking, et cetera. In the past three years, we've been additionally challenged due to changing demographics in the downtown core. Our parking lots and lawn around our campus are not in any way fenced, nor can they ever be due to the arterial traffic there. As a result, we and our city partners, and I want to say a big thank you right now to Ms. Kinnear, Mr. Beggs, Mayor Condon, and the myriad of city staff who have assisted us, we have really had to learn to roll up our sleeves and live smartly in a way that honors the transient and homeless population in the downtown core, but also creates a safe student-only zone around our school. We've worked hard, but our efforts are complicated by the fact that we're without any sort of hub or commons or gathering space on our campus. Our students eat lunch in the hallways, on benches or floors, as our cafeteria tops out at seating forty students. When it's time to celebrate a team's departure to state, we put about fifty people at the top of the stairs to wish them well. When we want to have a dance or major community event, we displace fitness programs so we can borrow space for the gymnasium. And because we are bisected and dissected, we are extra challenged creating a safe and cohesive community of students. Tiger Nation really needs a commons area, just like every other secondary school in this area, to help build and support our students and keep them being awesome learners and leaders for years to come. Shout out to Kate Burke, former Tiger.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Joanne McKay, please.
Good evening. I'm Joanne McKay, and I currently reside at 1003 West Vasal Ridge Drive, 99224. I formerly lived on Crestline Street on the South Hill. And I am here to address the same issue as the first speaker, Mr. Newman, the proposal of moving the South Hill school to that land swap behind the current elementary school. This unofficial dog park is a treasure. People interact every day. You have old people, you have young people, you have parents with their kids. They'll walk and walk down to the school and meet their kids after work, after school, and they come back with their animals, and they interact in the park. It is a treasure. The absence of that park is a death knell to the community. These schools are wonderful, but animals aren't allowed on school grounds. There isn't a place for you to take your dog. The addition of this middle school will increase the traffic on the access roads in and out of the area, which right now are already limited. In over and above this addition of the traffic, it's a safety issue. They're going to have to revise the roads, and these roads, this school is going to be in the county. The roads are county roads. It's the county who's going to have to improve them for their citizens to use, and the city is going to have to cooperate with that. And the county citizens don't have much of a voice in this process. And that is why I'm here, just to say, please consider the people who live in the area and who are going to be utilizing this space. If you take away the area, then is there going to be something where the community can be using the space? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, next series of speakers, Lucy, and please forgive me, folks, if I mispronounce your last name, Lucy White, I believe it is, or Wright, Lily Stribling, and Alicia Benson.
Hi, my name is Lucy White, and I live at 1739 West 10th Avenue on the South Hill, and this is my daughter Lily, I'm a Stribling. And we wanted to speak with you today. I don't know much about politics and the agendas here and what is and isn't allowed to be spoken about, but we wanted to talk about athletics. My kids are big on sports, and they participate in the police athletic leagues program that is happening in the parks. And William Davis Jr., who's part of the sports programs, I called him up tonight and asked him to come out and speak with you guys about the importance of athletics and the children. And he said he would like to do that, but he had another engagement tonight. So perhaps when we meet again in a week, he'll have an opportunity to come down with some of his police officer friends and talk to you guys about that. But he asked me to let you know that that program in the parks needs funding. And also, like, I thought that we would be talking about the stadium today. But I know that sports, I don't know about, a lot about politics, but I know that sports is one thing. Like, when I was a kid, I would go out and play with other kids, but sports is something that draws kids out of their houses to play with other kids and away from their technology. And my daughter, you want to tell them what sports you like? Football, basketball, soccer, she plays volleyball, so she participates. She goes to a lot of these schools that you talk about. I went to Riverside Elementary School and Riverside Middle School. And my dad graduated from Lewis &amp; Clark, and my children go to Sacagawea. And I know that all the kids, I know kids, and kids love sports. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, especially you, Lily. All right, Alicia Benson.
Thank you. Alicia Benson, 1915 East 65th. Thank you for having us. First and most importantly, I am the proud parent of a Spokane Public School student. She's going to be a second grader at Mullen Road. And I also have the privilege of serving as the Chief Operations Officer for Greater Spokane Incorporated. And lastly, I've had the honor of being able to serve on the school districts, grade configuration, and boundary study committees for the last couple of years. So a couple of important points I want to share this evening as you consider these bond resolutions. First, incredibly impressed with the smart collaboration and partnership between the city and the school district and the libraries. This is really incredible when we think about efficiencies, when we think about planning, and when we think about taxpayer dollars. This kind of thing is what taxpayers, residents, and businesses want to see between our governmental entities. Secondly, from a parent perspective, our daughter attends the largest school district in Spokane Public Schools. Overcrowding is real, and we're looking for solutions. And what I'm proud is how diligent our school board has been at thinking about how we address the need for class size reduction and overcrowding. And I really think have brought forward a really important solution for our community. And I think the other important piece of all of this is truly how it drives down. When we think about, this is an opportunity and time to be able to take a reduction of taxes, reinvest it in our schools and our facilities and community, and still give part of it back to our taxpayers. That does not happen every day, and so you have this opportunity. And lastly, working for Greater Spokane Incorporated as that regional business development organization, we're competing every single day in communities across the state, across this country, and across the globe. And when we think about how we attract and retain talent in our community, how we attract and retain the people that drive this community, these are the kinds of collaborations and partnerships that are essential for how we move a community forward. We hear our mayor say every day and every week, we want to be a city of choice, and we are a city of choice. And I think that this is an example of how we come together and do something historic as a community. And so as a parent and as a business leader, I want to commend all of you for being here and taking on this bold discussion and bold bond resolution. And I want to say that we're committed to the support of this bond resolution. These are smart investments for our community and for our kids, and these are smart investments as a business. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you very much. All right, the next series of speakers. One thing that I do want to mention, ladies and gentlemen, by virtue of the fact that the council is going to be meeting and having further discussions with regard to the stadium, I will allow mention of the stadium, comments with regard to the stadium tonight. In addition to that, next series of speakers will be Mr. Mark Lund, Andrew Rawls, Eric Boos, please.
Hi, my name is Mark Lund. So my primary address is 2033 West Stonewall. I'd say my secondary home address, 2404 West Longfellow. I have the opportunity to serve as principal at Glover Middle School in the West Central community. My wife would probably tell you I spend a little bit more time there than I do at home. Just, I can't thank everyone enough for being here tonight. A few things I think about when I look at the partnerships, you know, the land partnerships, and starting to see our schools as partnerships with our communities and assets to our communities, and a selfish interest in the middle schools as we roll up sixth grade. We are so ready to handle and prepare students and help them with adolescents. You know, a challenge right now is, we only get them for, you know, two years of adolescence, just that seventh and eighth grade. And we're thankful of the opportunity to serve them as sixth graders. And so for this to be an opportunity where we're going to have the space, I think is absolutely critical. Students are ready for it, and our staff is prepared for it. You know, a large interest of mine is certainly at Glover and a rebuild there. Kind of a fun thing, I get to take our students through, our West Central students, right? Like, last year, we were at roughly eighty percent free and reduced. But every time we meet with our students, and Mayor Condon talked about the achievement gap, I kind of take them through a roll call of all of the middle schools in Spokane. And when we finish that roll call and we, you know, list every middle school in Spokane, I get to ask our students, you know, where does Glover sit on that list as far as academic growth is? And they know, right? They know, and they're proud of it, and it's right at the top of that list, right? So we're thrilled for a new school, and we're so thankful for what we have here. But we would be certainly grateful to have an opportunity to occupy a new building and to be in a space that we think could even more so be an asset to our community. So again, I really thank everyone for being here. I think these issues are critical and just, you know, appreciate all the support.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good evening, members of council, members of the school board. I'm Andrew Rawls. I am the vice president of the Downtown Spokane Partnership. And thank you, Councilman Fagan, for the opportunity to provide some comments that are focused on the stadium. I am the father of two Woodbridge Elementary Titans and the father of the future of Woodbridge Elementary Titan. And with that said, I am here on behalf of the DSP Executive Committee. Our board has not yet been able to take this up in a full board meeting. The Executive Committee is in support of the stadium's inclusion on the... The executive committee is in support of the stadium's inclusion on the November ballot. It's an important and even possibly breakthrough opportunity for downtown, for our great community, and for our region's student athletes. The DSP Board has been a longstanding and passionate advocate for the sportsplex, and the proposed stadium provides such complementarity to it that it was self-evident that the stadium was equally supportable. And even outside of knowing a lot of the specifics, it appears that it would be a major economic driver, especially if offered as a true multi-use outdoor sports facility. On this point, I would offer that while voters may find the prospect of the district building facility that does more than just high school football to be challenging, I would submit that its proposed location on the North Bank ensures its success if viewed as a community investment. The concerns that we have are twofold. The first is parking. It looks to us like expansion of remote parking for downtown workers on the North Bank through an expanded circulator is going to become an increasingly important part of downtown's transportation plan. Downtown won't thrive without a parking plan that factors a lot of capacity on the North Bank as a major component. And the second is public safety. The police department has to continue its growth well above present levels in order to provide the neighborhood-based proactive policing that it's made strides in. Overcrowding at the jail also has to be resolved. This said, it appears to us that delivering, on the one hand, the public and safety investments that we and the rest of the public have sought for years, and on the other, a city and district combined effort to consolidate student and community sports facilities in one absolutely brilliant central location is not mutually exclusive. To close, the DSP supports and requests your consideration for advancing the proposed stadium to the November ballot to allow voters to decide what's best. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andrew. Mr. Boos, and then after Eric, Betty Crepo, Jerry Beaver, and Deborah DeWitt.
My name is Eric Boos. I currently reside at 614 West 23rd Avenue. I graduated from Lewis and Clark High School in 2017, and my last three years as a Tiger, every spring I spent playing soccer for Lewis and Clark. But spring didn't just bring soccer, spring also brought mud and standing water and snow at Hart Field. I'm here tonight to talk about stadium facilities and upgrading those, but I don't think that we should be looking at Joe Albee Stadium. I instead pose this question, why don't high schools play at their own facilities? The JV and C squad teams do it. Why does varsity football play at Joe Albee Stadium? If we look at Seattle, all the Seattle schools, even Kingco schools in that very dense populated area, each have their own stadiums at their own schools with capacities more befitting high school football crowds closer to 1,500. I currently attend the University of San Diego, and very close to our campus is Mission Bay High School. Mission Bay High School recently redid their football stadium. It seats 2,400. I don't think we need a 5,000-seat stadium for high school football. And if we want to talk about benefiting student athletes, we can do that by upgrading existing facilities. Hart Field is one of the most newly renovated facilities in the city for high school sports, and yet it's not prepared to drain from snow melt-off after the winter. For the past, the last two years of my high school soccer career, our practices were delayed because there was still snow on the field. And when we got to the field, there was standing water and mud. And it's not fun to play in standing water or mud. Sometimes it's not even safe to play in standing water and mud. I strongly appreciate the fact that the school board and the city council are including student athletes as part of this bond. But redoing Joe Albee Stadium benefits basically varsity football, and that's it. With the WIAA squad regulation being a 65-player roster for varsity teams, times the five GSL teams that also fall in school district 81, you're benefiting approximately 325 student athletes. At Lewis and Clark, that's not even a third of the football program. You know, it's, when we talk about school bonds, we want them to be benefiting the most students possible. So I urge both the school board and the student council to strongly consider looking at developing and redoing and improving athletic facilities that currently exist and are closer to the schools. It will also seriously improve access for students who want to go to those games. It's a 20-minute drive from Meade High School to Joe Albee Stadium. It's a 20-minute drive from Hart Field to Joe Albee Stadium. It's a 20-minute drive from Ferris to Joe Albee Stadium. It's hard to feel like a home fan when you have to drive for 20 minutes to watch your team play. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Betty Crepo, please.
My name is Betty Crepo. My home address is 4712 East Grace Avenue. I will speak briefly about the campus proposal evolving around the future Shaw Middle School. I was Shaw Middle School's volunteer coordinator for five years, and I have volunteered in Spokane Public Schools since 2002. I am a parent whose children all attended Cooper Elementary School, Shaw Middle School, and Rogers High School. I am a coach whose athletes all attend or have attended Shaw or Gary Middle School. I am a board member for the Northeast Community Center, which is just across the street in Shaw Middle School and adjacent to our Hilliard Library. I'm here to advocate for the proposed campus setting because I have years of middle school experience, which is the difficult transition between elementary and high school. If that transition includes food or shelter insecurity, lacks physical or emotional support, then the resulting teenage experience in high school can be draped in behavior issues, absenteeism, and a less-than-promising future. This is not just a child's future, but our community's future. The campus setting could include not just Shaw and the Hilliard Library, but a community engagement area with a food bank, teen closet, counseling opportunities, information station to direct families to resources within the extended campus. This campus setting would help to neutralize any food, shelter, physical or emotional insecurities that affect sixth through eighth graders, and thus create the strong foundation every child needs entering high school. Creating a campus of services embracing the difficult middle school years will saturate this age group with so much support centered in a building or a group of buildings known as a unified community resource area that invites families to enter and be served. Families whose parents may have had a terrible experience in middle school in their youth and can see now a campus setting that meets their needs that may never have been met before. Within a few square blocks, the extended campus would include Regal Elementary, New Tech, the On Track Academy, Shaw Middle School, Hilliard Library, and the Northeast Community Center. Not a single community resource would be absent in such a small space. Students and community members alike will see that the school, the library, the full force of community resources are laid before them, and parents will have actual hands-on support through those awkward years. Please, give parents a new look at what middle school can be tomorrow, to give them a reason to look past their own bad experiences in a school and encourage their children with what unified education will become. I greatly appreciate this opportunity to show my support for Shaw Middle School, Hilliard Library, community service campus proposal. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right, Deborah DeWitt, please.
Good evening. I'm Deborah DeWitt, and I live at 1927 West Summit Parkway, 99201. And I am honored to be the principal at the Libby Center, and I wanted to talk to you tonight a little bit about what goes on there on a daily basis. Everything happens at Libby. We have the catering department there. We have professional development for the entire district. Many of the administrative meetings take place at Libby Center. We have a number of option programs there, including TESSERA, the one-day-a-week highly-capable program for grades three through six; Odyssey, the full-time fourth grade through eighth grade highly-capable program. We have Spokane Virtual Learning Office Staff is there and teachers. We have instructional coaches, and we also have a new program, the Language Immersion Dual Language Program, the Spanish, and we're very excited to have them. Had a great first year with them. So we see this opportunity of building a library facility across the street as a wonderful opportunity for us to gain back space for classrooms that we need very much if we're going to grow the Language Immersion Program in the next seven years. We are going to add two classes a year, so we really need that space. We also think that schools have character, and if Libby had the opportunity to have more classroom space and less adult activities going on, we would feel more like a real school, not a utility space. And finally, the impact of a good school and a public library on the community cannot be measured, and we are really in favor of that facility. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jerry, before you start, we have Forrest Baird and another individual with the same last name. I can't make out your first name, I apologize. We have two individuals by the last name of Baird. Please line up behind Jerry Beaver there. And as well, BJ Freitas, please. Go ahead, Jerry. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you very much. My name's Jerry Beaver. I live at 2017 North Stevens Street. I'm a representative of the Pacific Northwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I'm also a new resident to the city of Spokane as of last fall, and hearing these improvements to not only the libraries, these schools, the potential football stadium, and event center that we could do with this is tremendous to the city. When I think about all these students that they can learn more, they can have an opportunity to want to go to school, smaller classroom sizes, I grew up in a very small community, I wanted to go to school. And that's what these kids can have the opportunity as well. When I think about wanting to get out and meet people in a new community, where do you do it? And like as the director of the library said, be libraries now. You can get out, you can go and visit people in these in-person event centers. Also, when you think about all the construction, myself being a construction worker, when you see all of this money going into funding new schools, libraries, a stadium, how many hundreds of workers are now going to be employed, and for how long will they be employed for? We keep that money in our community, that money goes right back into our community from those workers. Not only will these improve our schools, but it improves our community and uplifts it by keeping this money here, keeping that money with our workers. That brings their more morale up, and it makes people want to come to our community. When I moved from the Tri-Cities, I said, okay, I'm going to give Spokane a chance. After nine months, I don't want to go back. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. All right, Mr. Baird.
Yes. My name is Forrest Baird. My address is 917 East Westcrest. I'm a professor of philosophy at Whitworth University. Many major cities have been seduced into using public resources to build professional sports stadiums for private use. We're better than that. Let's not get sucked into building a stadium with levy funds that will primarily benefit a private individual. That's just wrong.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Baird, thank you.
I'm Joy Baird, 917 East Westcrest. I live with that other guy. I also would like to speak against using the funds to build the downtown stadium. I recently retired from teaching in Spokane Public Schools for 25 years, and it was my privilege and pleasure to work in a school district that so highly valued parents and teachers. During that 25 years, I was involved in a lot of school levies, lots of calling and asking people, please vote for this. And as teachers, we really worked hard to earn the respect and the trust of the community, and it has paid off. Levies pass consistently with overwhelming support in Spokane, and I think it's because we've earned that trust. However, if we use levy funds to build this downtown stadium, we're going to be violating the trust that we have built with the public. There's nothing wrong with the stadium, but we can't use funds, school funds, for this. As my husband said, this is a private thing. This is benefiting one man, not us. And so I'm asking, this is the ultimate bait and switch if we use funds this way. So I just would ask you to really consider not using the funds for downtown.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
I'd just like to make one point of clarification. What we're talking about is a bond, not a levy. So they're two different things. Bonds are for building, and levies are for educational programs.
But from my understanding, you're going to be taking the funds that would be going for public education and funneling it in this direction, correct?
What we're talking about is a bond specific, or bonds, specific for construction of facilities.
But it's being wrapped up in the guise of public education, correct?
It's a capital projects bond.
I'm not sure that if we're piecing together all of these wonderful visions that we've presented, that the public is going to see that there's going to be downtown developers that are benefiting from public funds. That's my concern.
Thank you for your comment.
All right, next series of speakers. BJ Freitas, second call for BJ. Are you here? Okay, BJ must have left. Philip Helene, Sidney Baird Childers, and Chris Jeskey. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me be here today. My name is Phil Healan. I live at 7004 South Park Ridge Boulevard. I am the executive director for SYSA Spokane Youth Sports. And SYSA serves over 10,000 kids along with Spokane Indians Youth Baseball and Softball. And much like schools, we don't have enough fields. By building a stadium downtown, that opens up the potential for new fields for kids to play on. Much like your classrooms, our fields are overcrowded. The kids at SYSA are the kids that are in your classrooms, that use the libraries, that use the swimming pools. Several studies show that kids that have the, you know, participate in sports, they do better in school. Obviously, with the child obesity problem, it helps that. They're more productive. It helps build a community when you're working with coaches and families and kids and all the time that they're spending together on the sidelines. The kids at SYSA are not the kids that are paying, you know, paying hundreds and thousands of dollars to be on club teams and travel teams. Again, these are the kids that use the swimming pools and the libraries and help make our community a better place to live. So I just encourage you to allow the voters to have that opportunity to, you know, make that decision or that choice whether they want a stadium downtown, which I think would be a good thing in a central location and could be a positive thing for our community. There's no better time than we have now with the taxes and the opportunity. We may never have this opportunity again. But again, I just want you to consider letting the voters decide and make a decision on whether this is a good thing. But definitely in our community, there's definitely a need for more facilities for kids to have access to. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Sidney, please.
Hi, my name is Sidney Childers. I live at 405 West 20th. I am the mother of two young boys who will one day play for Lewis and Clark High School, and I want to thank those of you on city council who have already voted against this new stadium. This is about trust between Spokane taxpayers, our schools, and our city government. Why is Walt Worthy pushing so hard for this stadium? Because for him, it's about profits and not about kids. If the stadium is used as proposed also for a minor league soccer team, do those ticket sales go to the schools or to the city? Of course not. The downtown location is ideal for real estate developers and Mr. Worthy, who just bought the Red Lion, but it doesn't consider students, nor does it consider the arts, as the footprint of this stadium will have a detrimental impact on the Spokane Civic Theater. Private companies and owners stand to make personal wealth while Spokane taxpayers foot the bill for building this facility. Levies and bonds pass because we trust the money is being used to improve our schools and education for our children. You, as the city council, do not have the right to destroy the trust that we put in our schools. If you have surplus because of the McLeary ruling, you could ask every district principal, and I'm sure they would give you a long list of places where you could spend that money. And if they can't, you can return that to the taxpayers and make sure that we continue to have trust in where our money is going. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris, folks, please hold the applause. Because I tell you, sometimes you're going to applause, sometimes you're going to boo, and we don't want to engage in conduct like that. Thank you. Go ahead, Chris. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Chris Jeski. I'm at 906 East 36th Avenue. I have the fortune, good fortune, to be co-chair for Citizens for Spokane Schools. I'm a local business professional. I live and work in downtown. But more importantly, I'm a parent of two Spokane Public Schools children. At a time when so many agencies are dysfunctional and not willing to cooperate, the partnership that you created between Spokane Schools and the city provides the citizens of Spokane optimism and confidence that our leaders are making decisions in the best interests of the community. I thank you for that and I applaud that. I'm here today to fully support and endorse the partnership to enhance our community and the proposed bond measures to improve our schools and our libraries. Given the changes that the state has made with the, by fully funding basic education and by limiting the amount of local levies that can be collected, we have an opportunity to support education through these issues. This presents a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to strengthen education and lower taxes at the same time. This is a win-win for everyone. And I just want to stress that. It achieves state mandated class size reductions at the elementaries in the most economical way by building additional space at our middle schools. It puts underutilized properties to good use. It improves aging middle school infrastructure. It continues a disciplined and long-term approach to improve education in our community. Please continue this excellent work and seize this opportunity. Today, I would also like to address the recent conversations about the high school stadium and possible locations. I personally endorse the central location, downtown location. I feel it would benefit families, student athletes and the community by reinforcing a vibrant downtown and creating an event destination for these kids. It would allow Merkel to expand and host regional events that the area is capable of attracting. It would provide a huge boost to the local economy and businesses. And it would be focused on students and extracurricular activities, yet allow for the same time for multi-use events by the community. Now, that's my professional opinion. Whether this opinion is shared by the voters, that's another question. But I think it's important that we allow them the opportunity to voice their opinion and to be heard. Please consider adding this measure to November's ballot and let those community voices be heard. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, next series of speakers. Mark Martel, Kurt Helderson and Megan Reed.
My name is Mark Martel. I live at 6214 West Methow Court, Spokane, 99208. I was born and raised in Spokane. I raised both my daughters in Spokane and I'm watching my grandchildren grow up in Spokane. When I first read of these different projects, it was very, very exciting to me because of many different things, but I think the main thing is because there were so many things in this. I mean, we very rarely will ever have an opportunity for so many projects to happen in a lifetime that so many things need to happen. Property is available. Economy is in the right place. To be able to do these things is a very exciting thing. To be able to build libraries, to add to libraries, to be able to add new middle schools for our kids and then also rebuild our middle schools. I don't think Glover has been rebuilt since I went to Glover, which has been a few years. But on the same token, I used to spend many weekends growing up at Joe Alby Stadium. Joe Alby Stadium has seen its time, you know? The thought of having a central facility for our city where everything is centrally located, it's not in the northwest area, is exciting, accessible to all of our schools equally. And you're looking at our downtown area. I've worked in downtown for over 30 years. Our downtown has changed so much. You know, look at our wonderful riverfront park and the changes that are going on. There's housing being added in downtown. People used to go and work in downtown and then when they were done, they would leave downtown and go back home. That's not the case. Downtown comes alive at night. It comes alive on the weekends. I get done with work. My wife meets me, we have dinner. We go shopping. Same thing with the stadium. It's a destination. It has become a neighborhood in itself in our downtown area. Why not have our children there? You know, downtown is not an area to be avoided. It's a place to be embraced. What's exciting about this is there are so many things in these bond proposals. Like Dr. Anderson said, it's a chicken in every pot for not only the kids in Spokane, but all the citizens in Spokane. So if it's for everyone's benefit in Spokane, everyone should have a say for it. That's why I think that everything should be put before the voters. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. Kurt, please.
I'm Kurt Helderson, 832 East 26th Avenue. Citizen of Spokane. I've got four kids, all athletic. First off, I'd like to say I'm in support of this bond proposition. I think it's incredible. I want to tell you how much I appreciate the coordination between all these government agencies. I think it's astonishing. It's wonderful. It really is just neat to see the amount of collaboration that went on here. As an airline pilot, I fly with people from across the country. And this is neat for me because I get to brag about this when I go to work. It's, this is something that I don't hear about going on anywhere else. And I'm really impressed with it. But I have an additional request. I'd like to please ask you to continue that collaboration and bring the stadium bond to a vote. Personally, I'm in opposition to Alby. I live on the South Hill. I just feel it's the wrong answer. And I feel if this doesn't come to a vote for the stadium proposition, that is going to be the answer. And I feel that's taking my choice and my thoughts away from me. So I would like to have an opinion on this. I'd like to have a vote on that. Whether we can do a downtown stadium or Alby, I'd like to find out what the city thinks about that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Megan? And after Megan, Brian O'Rourke, Linda Carroll and Dana Hughes? Please.
Megan Reed. I'm at 2531 South Magnolia. I am a parent of two Spokane school kids and a graduate of Spokane Schools myself. I'm a volunteer in the schools. I'm on lots of committees, including the co-chair of the Spokane School Citizens Advisory Committee and was part of the Boundary Study Committee as well this past year. And especially given that it's getting late, I, one thing I want to do to save on a little time is reiterate much of what Alyssa Benson and Chris Jeski said. They both outlined everything that I would have said more eloquently. But my children both go to one of our beautiful new schools that was just redone a few years back. It's already overcrowded. The extra classrooms that we built are now, you know, now we're moving art onto a cart. So we're really anxious for this new bond to be able to to do the middle schools and alleviate, eliminate that overcrowding and doing it sooner rather than later.
It was said earlier that these are smart investments and I'd like to say I agree with that statement. I'm in the foresight on the options of the stadium and I agree that the downtown one is the best one for that. And I do believe that this is, should be put on the November ballot for the voters to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. All right, the next series of speakers. Ooh, leadoff batter, Ms. Amber or Mrs. Amber Waldorf. And Jan Carell. And then Tyson Stubber.
Good evening. Amber Waldorf, 1204 East Baldwin. Thank you, city council members and school board members and library board members for coming together to listen to residents and community members this evening at this joint meeting. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Northeast Community Center as Director of The Zone Project. And as the mayor noted earlier, The Zone Project is a place-based community initiative in the neighborhoods of northeast Spokane that feed to Shaw and Gary Middle Schools. And it's a partnership between the city, the school district, over 50 community organizations, funders, Spokane Public Schools, residents and families. And we share a vision of safe neighborhoods where all children and youth are nurtured, where residents are engaged and where all families have what they need to thrive. We work collaboratively to align resources, programming to achieve measurable impact. And I'm here tonight to commend your effort to partner and align resources to benefit kids and families in our community. And I want to compliment you on modeling true visionary leadership seeking to maximize our public dollars for the benefit of all members of our community. I want to give a special thanks to Rick Romero and Mark Anderson for shepherding this collaboration. Because as we all know, it's easier to work in isolation and it takes a lot of hard work to collaborate. So the results can be transformative for our community. So thank you for doing that and taking the time. I want to speak about the proposal to rebuild Shaw, On Track Academy and the Hilliard Library on the same campus across the street from the Northeast Community Center. This investment can share and align learning, social services and skills and job training for multiple ages, youth, adults, even early learners in neighborhoods where many experience a significant opportunity gap. And I'm confident that we can shrink the achievement gap experienced by many students in northeast Spokane by providing this holistic campus and integrated programming with community partners. The partners in The Zone are looking forward to even starting to design what could be this community school or community campus starting this fall. It can create more than just amazing spaces for middle and high schoolers, but also access to family resources like parent empowerment and engagement spaces, food and clothing access, spaces for after-school programming, adult education, civic engagement and more. You have an incredible opportunity to leverage the past investments that have been made already on this campus. The newly enhanced New Tech Skills Center, over 300 students, early learners that attend the Head Start program that's been developed over the years at the community center. The medical and dental clinic in the community center. All these amazing resources to enhance a two-generation, even a three-generation approach to community development. Your community partners stand ready to work with you in achieving this shared vision and making it a reality in our community. It could be a real innovative approach that we could see then translated into some of our new middle schools. So thank you for investing in all areas of Spokane. And I look forward to seeing these two measures on the ballot.
Thank you very much, Amber. Jan Carell, please. And after Jan would be Tyson Stubber. And Todd Milkie.
Hi, I'm Jan Carroll and I reside at 6518 South Highland Park Drive. Born and raised in Spokane, have three kids who went through the Spokane Public School system. So very proud of the amazing job that the city's done and worked with the collaboration of Spokane Public Schools. You know, the stars are really aligned to come together, to be innovative, to really develop the core and create some central, you know, business development, which is what the downtown corridor really needs right now. We have a lot of kids who are in desperate search for field space. The demand is so high, the supply is limited. I support the additional fields that the Spokane Public School can offer along with the downtown stadium. I think that the most important thing right now is not to take the voice away from the voters. They should be allowed at least the opportunity to decide whether or not this is a good situation for Spokane. So with that, thank you. And I appreciate all of the collaboration. It's really a breath of fresh air.
Thank you very much. Last call for Tyson Stubber. All right. Mr. Milkie.
Good evening, city council members, school board members. My name is Todd Milkie. I'm the CEO of Greater Spokane Incorporated, 801 West Riverside here in downtown. Tonight, I want to come and heartily give my support for this ballot measure, the ballot measures and the partnership that we see before us. And I will say that as a lifelong resident and somebody that's involved in politics for a long time, that I have never seen this before. We know that too many times governmental entities work in isolation and don't cooperate. And unfortunately, the downside to that is we duplicate public resources. We're not most, we're not the most efficient in how we allocate those resources. And the people that pay through these separated efforts are our taxpayers. And so I applaud you for being able to have this discussion. So the first thing that I want to say is with regard to education, we firmly at Greater Spokane Incorporated believe that education grows economies. It is the number one question that we get from businesses that want to expand their operations here in Spokane or those who want to relocate to this area, is talk to me about your talent. And what can you do to show me that you've got an innovative education system and we excel in this region in just that area? It's important to note that the fastest-growing segment of our workforce are 18 to 34-year-olds. They're coming to Spokane and that's something that most communities really want. Some of you are seeing it reflected in your class sizes or your demand for class sizes in the early, in the early elementary education grades, which like I say, is a testament that young families are leaving some of the more heavily populated metropolitan areas and moving to this region. And so, so we need to make sure that we continue to reinforce that because one of the top decisions when they pick their neighborhood is talk to me about the quality of your school. I also want to talk really quickly with regard to the stadium issue. And that is, we've had a long history here. The last time major investments were required at Joe Alby Stadium, we tried to keep all the school districts together and utilize a centralized location. And we couldn't keep the partnership together. We even looked at utilizing the fairgrounds as a different centralized location to appease some of the valley districts that felt Joe Alby was too far out of the way. And we couldn't hold it together. And since then, citizens in the region have spent money through those school districts to build separate football stadiums at each of those high schools. Not the best thing for taxpayer dollars. We're at a point now where we need to once again rebuild Joe Alby Stadium. And so we're going to spend money on this. The question is, is what's the best investment for the future of this community? And echoing this partnership that we see before us, what's best for both the school district and the city on a long-term basis? I would, I would propose that building it in a centralized location and adding the benefit of additional sports fields at Merkel is probably the best long-term solution. Most communities are looking for consolidating their public entities, their public facilities in a centralized area so that they can draw people to that metropolitan core. And that's why I think this is so essential. You'll have co-located public facilities. It's also important to address the parking issue because it does address the bigger parking issue for all the facilities and downtown as well. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for the collaboration and hope you'll put this on the vote.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, folks, I'm going to take a stab at this name. It appears to be Trigland? Tracy Lind. Okay. Come on up, Tracy. And then after Tracy. And then after Tracy, Rhiannon Nielsen, Serena McPherson.
Thank you for the time. My name is Tracy Lind. I have terrible handwriting. I live on 1014 West 16th Avenue on the South Hill. And I'm here because I happened to be at the dog park earlier today. I go three to five times a week year-round, snow, spring flowers, walking underneath the beautiful pine trees there in the forest. And I heard a gentleman earlier, they said they'd done research on this and had reached out to the community and he described the South Hill as an unused landfill. But it's not. It is an incredible public space. It is a shared space. It is a resource to this community. It's of incredible value to this community. I see people of all walks of life who would probably never otherwise interact, parading around the dog park with dogs of all sizes, trails worn through to dirt by padded feet. And you can sit on a bench that's a memorial bench with a gentleman who had gone there with his dog and passed. And he has a bench in his name that I sit on and watch the parade of dogs and people go by. I think there probably would have been more people here if we'd known sooner because there are, it's a very well-utilized space. We're so isolated as a society and there's a few public spaces that we share and we can commune in together and meet in such a beautiful way. I just hope that there's a way that they can support the school because I think this is a wonderful project. But I wish there's a way they could do it without losing this invaluable resource that we have. It's a wonderful place. I would challenge anybody to go there, walk. There was a news crew there recently interviewing people in the park, breeds of dogs, and it's a wonderful space and I would hate to lose it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tracy. All right, Rhiannon Nielsen, Serena McPherson. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Glenn Rutter, Tara Yarborough. One more time for Glenn Rutter and Tara Yarborough. Oh, here we go. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you, and good evening, Board members and Council members. Glenn Rutter, 5904 South Helena Street. Again, like everybody said, I think it's a great thing to see two governmental entities working together, especially for the good of the community. The bond measures I fully support. Education is great. The facilities, the libraries, that's all good. Some of us, however, don't have children, at least not human children. We have four-legged children. And I gotta tell you, that park is a jewel. And I get it. It makes sense to utilize an adjacent property for coexisting two schools to share resources. That makes sense. But I also have to tell you that this park, like many have said before, is quite a excellent place for recreation, for not only the dogs but for the people. And it's also a good place to meet people. I heard a lot of talk about connections in the libraries and collaboration and stuff. I gotta tell you, I've met more people at that dog park in the last three months than I've met anywhere in Spokane. And so I just encourage you to please take a closer look at maybe relocating or creating another location for this middle school expansion. This dog park should be saved in its current location, and you should look elsewhere for expanding the schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Glenn. All right, Tara Yarborough. Last call for Tara. All right, Erica Kahler, Catherine Alexander, and Stacy Ward. And it looks like we have Catherine and Stacy. All right. All right, we'll go ahead and show Erica Kahler as having left the meeting. Catherine.
I'm Catherine Alexander. I live at 1819 East Liberty Avenue. I'm Chair of the Bemis Neighborhood Council and I sit on the Zone Board, and I'm also part of the District One Leadership Team. I would really like to commend the School Board for reaching out to and involving itself in the community. I think this is the first time that I know of that you've actually gotten into the rest of the community, and I think that's really fabulous. It just shows what a wonderful asset you can be to our city, so I really appreciate that. Thank you so much. And the City Council also are really doing wonderful things, bringing all of this together. We really need to see the development in the Bemis Hilliard Library and in the Shaw Middle School and the Northeast Community Center. That provides, can provide almost a cradle to grave support for the people in District One. It will become an incredibly vibrant center, and I really encourage you to do that. On a personal level, I want to just suggest that maybe the stadium should be its own thing. It is really a downtown economic development thing. It's not really education-centered, even though the education kids might use it. So I would keep the two separate so that you don't color the decisions on the ballot. But I really do want to support both these ballot things, the library development and the potential partnership with the schools is fabulous. So thank you both very much for doing that.
And thank you, Catherine. Stacy Ward. And before you start, Stacy, I would also like to call up Tom Sanderson and Tim Castell, if they are still here. And if there is anybody left in the audience tonight that has not signed up to testify and you would like to, please raise your hand real quick so I can see where you're at. All right, seeing none? Please, thank you.
My name is Stacy Ward, and I live at 5805 South Ben Burr Road. I'm building a house on Crandall Court. I just wanna, I'm speaking here as the Athletic Director at Ferris High School. I'm a product of Spokane Public Schools. I went to Indian Trel, Salk, and Shadle, and then got my undergraduate at Whitworth and my graduate degree at Gonzaga. I guess that makes me sort of all-city, maybe, if you put on a different thinking cap there. I also grew up the daughter of a football referee, and I love to spend Friday nights going to football games with my dad, small towns all over the place, including Alby Stadium. I remember being super, super excited to go to Alby in 1970. I used to do my birthday party there because 1970 was when they put in the AstroTurf, and I thought it had something to do with astronauts. And it was just regular football, not space football. But Alby Stadium was built in 1950 in four months. My house has been in the process of being built for over six months, and maybe that's why it has some issues today. I don't know. It cost only just about $500,000 to build Alby, and I loved Alby as a student. I loved going there with my father, but it's seen its time. I believe that the downtown stadium would be a benefit to all of the high schools in the area. And for those with concerns, it really started, the idea of it started as a place for kids in our high schools to play football and to play soccer and to fit in those lacrosse kids who I get phone calls from all the time in my job. Lots of folks could use it. I really believe that we should put it to a vote of the people and let the, let the people speak their voice. But I also feel sort of uniquely qualified to address one of the issues here. I'm also a dog owner and a dog grandmother, and I go to the dog park. And I'm just suggesting possibly could be the, the dog park, could that be the buffer zone between the elementary school and the middle school? And maybe we could have studies of, you know, animal behavior like the Kansas State Chicken Order, Peck Order Studies? Or we could, we could be studying, you know, ways to compost the manure that ends up in the plastic bags. And I think that we could coexist. I love the dog park. I love what you guys are doing together, especially in the days of red states and white states and fake news and real news. I think it's just fabulous, the collaboration. And I'm in favor of the proposal, and I'm in favor of letting the people vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Tom Sanderson, followed by Tim Castell. And folks, that would round out the list of folks that have signed up for public testimony. One last time, if you'd like to testify on the two bond measures, please raise your hand if you haven't signed up yet. Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for having me. My name is Tom Sanderson, 1803 East 37th Avenue. If you're familiar with the area, I'm the guy with the sink in his front yard. Anyway, originally I grew up in New York City, moved away about 20-some odd years ago. Moved to Spokane about maybe 12 years ago. In that time, I've, I've met a few people. Mr. Beggs, I've been in some shows with your partner. Ma'am, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, but my son had breakfast with you at Wilson one day. I don't want to talk about how I know Mr. Maxey. I've been a plumber for Mr. Orndy's family. One of the gentlemen I met at the park within the last three months was just up here. My point is Spokane is a really small city, and I personally cherish that. I think it's something that, it brings the community together to know somebody so easily everywhere you go. You can't, I can't go anywhere without knowing anybody. I'm also a plumber, so I know a lot of people from that. But Mr. Mayor Condon called me one day to answer a question. You don't get that in New York City, which I thought was amazing. My, my point is the dog park. I know, it's kind of comical at this point, but I highly commend you folks in what you're doing. I'm a student at Eastern, taking a master's in public administration. So to hear collaboration, intergovernmental, inter-government collaboration is not something we talk about. It's kind of weird. So I commend you and I thank you for that, and I'll have resumes in case anybody wants one. But what I miss in New York is what we don't have here, it's a, it's a sidewalk community. We're not gonna have that. It's not the way we're based. It's not the way the city's made up. It's not the way the East Coast is made up. We don't have that community, that instant interaction. It just doesn't happen here as often. But it happens at the dog park. And if you do that with your project, which I totally think you should, because I have kids who are in LC, I had a phone conversation with you, and Sacagawea, I don't know, anyway. If you're gonna do that, and I commend you for doing it, and I think you should, please relocate the dog park. I live right across the street from Hamblin. Hamblin is a dog park, it just needs a fence. There's plenty of opportunities. We have huge space in places like Comstock. There's no reason why you can't just designate a small area and say, bang, off-leash. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your, for your collaboration. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your presentations. Thank you for the phone conversation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sanderson. And the last person to testify tonight, Tim Castell.
My name is Tim Castell. I live at 5320 South Napa. And usually the last person up to speak gets booed off real quick, so we'll keep it short. And there's not a lot left to say. But this opportunity really is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that, that I hope we get to capitalize on. This unique collaborative effort between the city and Spokane Public Schools and libraries, it'd be pretty remarkable in 100 years to look back and say, wow, look what they did. Look how this came to fruition. They put their heads together, and look what they came up with. And I, I'm a product of Spokane Public Schools. I went to Hamblin Elementary when it was basically a bunch of portables. I went to Sacagawea, and nothing's changed there since I went there. I went to Lewis and Clark, last graduating class before the remodel, and I think it was a pretty remarkable statement to the kids to see that happen. I didn't realize it when I went there, when I graduated, but after I did, and then looking back, I thought, what a remarkable statement to these kids to see that everybody cares about them. I mean, look what they're doing. It's, it's sports, it's education, it's the arts, and they redid the school and did a great job. And so as I saw that coming, you know, coming to fruition and happening throughout the city, I started paying more and more attention to it. My wife is a teacher at Grant Elementary, and I now serve on the Citizens for Spokane Schools Committee. And I was compelled to get up here and just say something quick to let everyone know my position, which is, I think this is, I'm gonna vote for both bond measures. I think it's important for this to be passed for both the city and the schools. And I think that the downtown, the centrally-located stadium is a remarkable idea. It's unique to Spokane. It's nothing we've ever had before, and it will really put us on the map for a lot of other opportunities coming to Spokane in the future. So that's my two cents. Thanks for everybody's efforts and good night.
Thank you very much. And as well, I want to thank on behalf of the Spokane Public Schools and the City of Spokane, thank you for everybody's testimony tonight. Now that being said, Madam President, I return the meeting to you.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. I appreciate that. And thank you, everyone who took the time to come down and speak to us and stayed through to the end. We really do appreciate hearing all your comments. So at this point, after hearing comments, I would like to call for a motion from the School Board and a second to approve the School District Resolution 2018-10, Bonds to Construct New Schools and Replace Aging School Facilities to Include: Three New Middle Schools, Replacing, Renovating Three Existing Middle Schools, Cafeteria and Commons for Lewis and Clark High School, A New Facility for the On Track Academy, A New or Renovated Stadium, Renovating the Libby Center for Expansion of Option Programs, and Technology, Safety, Security Upgrades, and Smaller Building Improvements at All Schools. You have a motion?
Yes, I'm, I'm, you were asked, do I, do I need to repeat?
No, you don't. So you.
Thank you. So I, I move for the approval of Resolution Number 2018-10, as stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now we'll have School Board discussion before we take a vote on the motion.
Could I ask for clarification from Dr. Anderson, please? Section 1, Paragraph H, could you clarify what that is, what Section 1, Paragraph H is stating? Because it's, addresses the stadium, and I'd like to be crystal clear on how our bond proposal on the ballot would read.
So the, the proposition that you have before you, particularly about the stadium, says to renovate or replace. So what that does at Alby itself, we may have to replace it right on site as we get into architectural work and engineering work and so forth, or modernize it if we can do. It also does allow the option if the city decides to place before the voters the option of downtown, that if voters want that, we could replace Alby at a different location. So it provides the flexibility to do either.
To do either. Thank you for that. So I will just kick off with that clarification, that I am enthusiastically voting in favor of placing this resolution, or excuse me, placing this ballot measure before our voters. And I do so because it serves many needs. Not too long ago, we had Full Day Kindergarten was identified as a priority in our state, and legislature even allocated funding for it. Many schools across the state left the money on the table because they could not figure out the facility need. Spokane Public Schools, through the leadership of Dr. Reddinger and staff, came to the board, worked with the board, board worked with staff, and we came up with, with a solution. And before many districts in the state were able to implement Full Day Kindergarten, our children were well on their way with full-day access to education. I believe that it was that, that the same creative thinking and really considering what's best for children, which is at the heart of what we do every day, that this collaboration came forward. We had a, an initiative by the voters that was, what was it, 1351, passed four years ago, to lower class sizes. Schools across the state are not able to get to reduce their K3 class sizes. The, the facility component is simply cost prohibitive. It's too difficult. Through this collaboration, we, we can address that. We can, we, we have great schools. My children have attended our schools. They've graduated, they've gone on to college, they've received a great received a great education. I'd like that for all of our students. They have opportunities now for even greater education. We know that it's a best practice to have lower class sizes, and this partnership allows that to happen. We've worked hard with our community to identify the priority of moving our sixth graders into middle schools. This bond allows for that. I am interested in, in looking for a solution to our dog park, to the concerns tonight, that's the first I've heard of it. I'm a dog owner. I am sympathetic to that, but I, I believe that if we put Dr. Anderson and Mr. Romero in a room for 10 minutes, we'll see what they come up with. So for those reasons, I am very enthusiastically looking forward to voting in support of putting this vote forward to our public. And, and I do hope that we are able to see all three measures on the ballot. I, I hope to see this on the ballot. I hope to see the library initiative on the ballot. And, and I would hope to see a, an initiative on the ballot for, or bond on the ballot for recreation facilities. We've heard some compelling interest tonight, and, and I, I think that all three work together to serve our community in a very unique and advantageous way.
President Chapin, I'll be brief at the late hour, but I just want to say thank you to the City Council. Back yep, sorry about that. Thank you, everyone, for joining us here tonight in the City Council for your extraordinary leadership. It's amazing to me here that a year ago, we never would imagine that we would be here today. I've lived in government for over 20 years, and government cooperation is an oxymoron. That's not the case in Spokane. So I appreciate that. I just want to salute the trailblazers in this room that made this happen. Again, it was done in very short order. And having watched the timer tick down here for quite a few hours here, I'm fond of the moonshot over 20, 20 years ago, and Neil Armstrong's quote, and I'll just paraphrase it briefly. I think this is a revolutionary vote for us tonight, an evolutionary vote for us tonight. And I think that this is certainly going to be a modest step for our community, but I think it's going to be a giant leap for every student. And I think that's for many students, yet even to be part of our school system. And that is excellence for everyone. So thank you, team.
Yeah, I just want to echo and thank all the speakers, especially those who identified how unique of a partnership this has been and how productive it's been, and the number of ideas generated has been amazing. It's going to allow us to put into motion, three years earlier, the middle school reconfiguration, which we, as Director Brower mentioned, we went through a great process with the community. It was a process that garnered great support. And having gone through, you know, Sacagawea 7, 8 middle school myself, that would have been a much better experience if it had been a 6, 8 model, I believe. So I feel strongly that those things are going to offer great results for our students and in strong support of the bond going to our voters. I think I also, I've been thinking a lot about the stadium issue, and I really do think that should be a separate, distinct thing that goes to voters. I would also suggest, since I have the council's ear here, that it doesn't necessarily need to be something that would go to voters in November. There are lots of complexities, lots of questions got raised today that made me think a lot about it. And it seems like an issue where we could use some more time to think through the revenue streams, the other partnerships that are possible with a downtown stadium. But I think that's something that ultimately would be up to the voters to decide.
Any comments, Charlie? All right. In the interest of full disclosure and complete transparency, I'd like the minutes to reflect the fact that my husband works for the Spokane Public Library System as the Community Engagement Manager for the North Region. In consultation with our School District Legal Counsel, it has been determined that there is no conflict of interest as to my role as a school board member participating in the vote on this bond resolution. However, I want to make sure I share this information and make sure it's included in tonight's minutes. Okay? To clarify a couple of things, we had some speakers talk about, there was a lot of comment about the sports facility. And either way, hopefully, the citizens will support the school district bond that we are about to vote on. And we do have money set aside in there for a sports facility. It's just the location that's the question at the moment. And it will be a multi-sport, multi-use sports facility. We heard loud and clear from our community, they do not want just a one, money invested in one sport facility. They want it to be able to use by kids who participate in a variety of sports. So personally, what I'd be looking for is not just football, but soccer, lacrosse, wherever the lacrosse guy is, and, and all those things that kids need a play space for. Marching band, all that good stuff. Let's see, the downtown, building the stadium in the proposed downtown location would have additional costs, and that's why the city is considering it separately, because those would not be school district costs. Also, early on, we've been, we've been working on this for literally years. We did look at the option of improving the athletic fields at each of our high schools so sports could be played in those locations. Not only was the cost to do that, the initial building significantly more than doing it in one location, the ongoing maintenance was exponentially higher, because we'd be maintaining five locations instead of maintaining one location. One thing we've heard from our citizens is, please do it, but do it in the most cost-effective way possible. So that's why we're looking at a single arena for high school sports instead of multiple Let's see, I think that's... And I also appreciate the partnership work between the school district and the city. I think this is great. I, I'm, I couldn't be happier about it. I think the more we can work together and have our, our, our groups share facilities and work together and talk together about how we can collaborate, the better, the better it is for our citizens, financially as well as lifestyle-wise. So this is really an exciting time. That's all I have to say. So with that, any other comments from the board before I call the question? All right, we have a motion and a second on the table to approve District Resolution 2018-10, Bonds to Construct New Schools and Replace Aging School Facilities. All in favor of the motion? Oh, wait a minute, this is a roll call vote, isn't it, Row? Okay.
President Chapin?
Aye.
Vice President Haynes?
Aye.
Director Brower?
Aye.
Director Newberry?
Aye.
Director Weiser?
Aye.
Okay. The motion passes and the resolution is approved.
Thank you, Madam President. All right, council members, it is our turn. I would like to call for a motion and a second on Resolution Number 2018-069 that would place a bond issue on the November ballot to finance the city library improvements, which would include: Three new libraries at Hilliard, Sprague, and East Central; Modernization of Shadle Park, Indian Trail, Downtown, and South Hill Libraries.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Council commentary, please. Questions, clarifications, things to that effect.
Well, just as the maker of the motion and the granddaughter of a librarian, I think this is the best investment that we can make in our community. And I know we have some challenges with public safety, but boy, libraries could be a real answer to some of those challenges. So I am happy to support this.
I want to thank Mark Anderson, Dr. Anderson, Rick Romero. You've done an amazing job getting us together. I want to thank the school board as well and all the participants that came here tonight to testify. Thank you all, appreciate it. And I can't, I lost track of how many times people said a lifetime opportunity, but I think it bears repeating, this is a lifetime opportunity. And so I would urge my fellow council members to support this library bond. I think it is good for the citizens, it's good synergy with our other partners, and I think it is something that we can look back at and say, we did this for our future. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Stratton.
I'll be very quick. I just want to salute our library board and Andrew Chance and your staff. Did Andrew leave already? I'm saying something nice about you. This, I know how much work this was, and I know the dedication that it took and the passion to get here tonight. And I just want you to know, I appreciate your work. I think this is, your presentation is amazing. I, I think this is a step totally in the right direction, and I'm, I'm going to be happy to support it. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. Councilmember Beggs.
Yes, I also just want to commend the people that have put this package together, particularly Director Chance and the board. They were quite responsive to the South Hill requests and the East Central. And I think the final package is fabulous, and I'm really excited not just to put it on the ballot, but also to campaign for it and urge everyone else to vote for it. It's going to be exciting. I wanted to touch just briefly on some of the other topics that people brought up. I, myself, have heard loud and clear on the dog park from people, and I've, I've used that dog park many times. It's great. I'm told that although that particular spot is well-suited for the middle school, there are other spots nearby that we're going to transform. And I just hope that the people in charge of that transformation will take all the testimony and spend the money to really make it up nice, so it's not just a poor substitute, that it's actually better. And I'm looking on the aerial map, there's already some trees, but as Mr. Meckler has informed me previously, we need more trees there and good water and good fencing. And so I hope that'll be part of it. That's certainly why I'm supporting the overall partnership on that issue. Secondly, on the stadium, I've heard from so many people, let the citizens vote on it. And I really agree with that principle, and I think we need to spread that to several issues. The thing that was amazing about this project is so much work went together to come to a solution for problems. And we have other problems that need that same level of engagement, and that includes public safety, crime reduction, how to deal with affordable housing, our sidewalks and unpaid roads. And so I'm looking forward to working with this council and the administration over the next two years, so we can come up with the same kind of quality projects, go to the voters and let them decide, but give them really amazing choices in which to decide. And I still remain in favor of just a clean up and down on the stadium location vote, but so far, I don't have those votes, but I will keep advocating for that in the spirit that the voters should choose on all these issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Beggs, and thank you very much for setting the stage for the next big discussion here in the city of Spokane. First thing that I'd like to say is thank you so very much, Spokane Public Schools, for this opportunity. This is unprecedented, folks. We're going to make history tonight, I have a feeling. And it's just another testament about Spokane leading the way in the rest of the nation here. This is the kind of stuff that I'd like to hear Spokane is leading the way, Spokane is in the top five. This is the kind of stuff that makes Spokane, and our citizens helped to make Spokane. The city government, your team, Mayor, thank you very much. The team got together with the team from Spokane Public Schools, and wow, absolutely amazing. Director Chance, I want to thank you very much for working with the council with regard to the kiosk. And I hope that you didn't get in trouble from the mayor. Because, boy, when you left that meeting, you were a little worried. Now, all of that being said, Ms. Fister, I currently have a motion and a second on Resolution Number 2018-069 that would place a bond issue on the November ballot to finance city library improvements to include: Three new libraries at Hilliard, Sprague, and East Central; Modernization of Shadle Park, Indian Trail, Downtown, and South Hill Libraries. Please conduct a roll call vote.
Council President Potem Fagan?
Yea.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Councilmember Beggs?
Aye.
Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Like the record reflect that it's a unanimous vote with Council President Stecker absent.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fister. And now I will say, yea. All right. Now that we've got our votes out of the way, and it appears as though we're both headed to the ballot in November, I would greatly appreciate it if Mr. Rick Romero and Dr. Mark Anderson would address the boards on the next steps.
Well, first of all, thank you, Spokane School Board and Spokane City Council, for these affirmative votes to put these two items on the ballot. The next step for both of us will be, and don't run away tonight, we have to get your signatures on these, because we need to deliver these bond resolutions to the Spokane County Elections Office, and that's due by next Tuesday, in order to get it on the November 6 ballot.
I just want to thank you all for, for coming together to support these, these projects and these ideas. It's, it's a phenomenal story, I think. I think the partnership is going to be a big part of what's going to lead to the success of these two initiatives. So thank you so much.
And then, once it's delivered to the Elections Office, we have a long road ahead of us to make sure the public understands what is on the ballot, so they may conform decisions. As we've heard about the dog park, making sure we have possible solution for that, so that we have, can build that middle school on city land. So all of that work needs to happen between now and November 6, which will be on the trail of every neighborhood council, retirement center, public, anywhere two or more gathered, we'll probably be chatting with them, along with our whole school staff. We, Dr. Reddinger and I do a lot of education with our school staff, so... And then, we will need to start the development of agreements between the two agencies. We have one with parks, a joint use agreement, but we need to develop one with the libraries, because this is a new idea. And thanks to Andrew and his team, this will be an exciting opportunity, too. So those are all next steps that we will need to do in the next few months.
Wonderful.
Wonderful. All right. That said, I believe our business is done this evening, so meetings adjourned. Thank you all for coming.